Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with the staff and invite a guest. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. So first item, and I see that we have Mr. Thompson joining us virtually. Hello, Commissioner Thompson. First item is discuss the formal agenda. We all had an opportunity to kind of review the agenda. Do we have any questions, comments? Okay, we'll go on to our topics. First is discussion of SB ten thirteen, allowing persons to live in RVs. On page three of our agenda. We have fifteen minutes we've set aside for this discussion and our community development director. Welcome, Gail.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you. This evening, we're here to have a discussion and get some feedback from your board regarding Senate Bill ten thirteen. The Senate bill was adopted by the legislature this past legislative session. And what it does is it would allow counties to have property owners place one RV on their property that could then be used as a long-term rental for some other family or persons. And so when we look at this bill. And I don't know if you're seeing my box of people, but. So it was signed by the governor on July thirteenth. It becomes effective on January first. And it's not mandatory for counties to do this, but if we do choose to move forward with allowing this, then the counties do have the ability to impose additional requirements as well. And so when we talk about Senate Bill ten thirteen, there were some mandatory things that are included in the bill that the county could not waive. One of those is that the property where the RV would be placed would have to already have an existing single-family home on it. And that home would have to be owner occupied. So you couldn't have a situation where the home is being rented out to someone else and then an RV could additionally be placed on the property. There can only be one other dwelling unit on the property. The RV can never be used as a vacation rental or a short-term rental. The RV would either have to be leased or owned by the tenant. And the other thing that's in the Senate bill is that the property owner is responsible for providing essential services to the RV itself. So if your board wants to move forward with this, these are the things that at a minimum, we would have to implement because those are the mandatory requirements of the bill. If the county does want to move forward with this, we can also add some other things and set up different procedures as well. We could require property owners to register the RV with the county. We could require written rental agreements between the property owner and the RV tenant. We also have the ability to set caps on what rent could be charged. And we can also establish our own inspection and citing standards as well if the county wanted to do that. So when Senate Bill ten thirteen originally came up for discussion in the legislature this past year, it was originally mandatory and that did get changed. And so when it was still in the mandatory stage, staff had met to talk about this code compliance planning. I believe Monica was also involved in those discussions. And I think also public health. And we had a lot of concerns about it. So I do want to raise those for your board so that you're aware of them. And they were also included as an exhibit in your agenda package today as well. So. Some of the concerns that we have obviously are tied to life safety and health and quality of life. And we know that RVs were not meant to be long-term dwellings for people. There are really temporary things that are meant for vacation use and limited term use. And we know that Sunset Lake, for example, has had several fires over the past three years. And two of those fires have had fatalities. And so when these RVs burn, they can go out very quickly. They usually only have one escape route from, from the unit. And there are a lot of chemicals and plastics and materials that burn and can cause a lot of noxious fumes. So that's obviously a very big safety concern for staff. Another concern that we have is that sometimes we find that abandoned RVs have been placed on public lands. Some of these have caught on fire. The cost to clean up the public lands has been increasing and sometimes it just doesn't get done. And I've put up some articles here to show you what some of the, the local fire districts and have been dealing with in terms of abandoned RVs. So if we, your board does want to move forward with this, we would want to make sure that we are addressing that issue as well. Sometimes we find that even when RVs are hooked up to essential utilities, that the hookups are not always properly done. You can see on the left-hand side of the screen where the hose is just dumping, you know, untreated waste directly onto the ground. We have all sorts of interesting electrical connections that are not always safe or done properly. And then over here, you can see where they are draining the RV with the wires and everything together. And I think it's being held up by a gas can. So. And another thing that staff has a very big concern about tied to health and safety is that some of these RVs don't have functioning heating units. And so people are improvising. And this is the real-life example where someone has rigged up wood burning stove in their RV and they've cut the, the RV, put a hole in it to run the exhaust pipe, which is good. But it can get very hot. It is a possible fire danger. And so we'd want to be very careful with that life safety issue as well. And then finally, I think overall, we just need to look at quality of life and not only for neighboring property owners, but especially for the people who find themselves in a situation where this is really their last option before not having any type of roof over their heads. And, you know, we want to make sure that if the, your board does want to move forward with this, that the people who are living in the RVs, that they have a decent quality of life and that, you know, the RVs are watertight, that they have safe heating, that they have all their essential utilities. Because, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing right for everyone in this situation. So again, when Senate Bill ten thirteen first came up, staff did forward a lot of comments off to AOC about our concerns. And a lot of those really haven't been addressed by Senate Bill ten thirteen. For example, you know, it's not clear, is there going to be an occupancy limit that we would have on how many people could live in an RV? Could tenants add on structures, things like decks and porches and make it an even more permanent living situation? We don't really have a lot of answers. We don't have standards and RVs are not regulated through building codes. So this isn't like someone moving into a house or apartment, an apartment. This is really kind of uncharted territory. And so that's one of the reasons we wanted to speak to your board tonight. So what we're asking for, first of all, the big question is, is this something that Cl辛县 county would like to move forward with? Allowing people to place an RV on rural residential land, which would be your RA one, RA two zones, coastal residential, and some of the other zones that we have residential zones throughout the county. And then if your board does want to move forward with this, staff is also asking some additional direction on whether or not there should be some sort of licensing program or, and/or a fee so that we can, staff can track and differentiate between permitted rentals and unpermitted rentals. Also, should we be requiring a rental agreement between the property owner and the RV tenant? And do we want to look at capping how much property owners could charge RV tenants? And also, how would we go about? What kind of documentation would we want to have, if any, to verify that essential services are being provided to the RV tenants? And then finally, if your board chooses to move forward with this, are there any local additional citing standards or safety standards that your board would like to see put in place? And that concludes my presentation. If you were to decide to move forward with it, we could potentially bring amendments back with the process and any fees that you would want to choose and/or any standards that you would like to have. And then we could bring those before your board possibly as early as January. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Community Development Director Henriksen. I appreciate the summary and highlighting a lot of the issues that come with this. I have examples. I witnessed a lot of those myself. So they're very familiar examples of the negative impacts of this. So I have real concerns about going forward with it, but I'll turn it over to Commissioner Banks.
So I'm neither for nor against it currently. I do feel like it is something that should be tabled until after the short-term rental situation is solved. But that, that's just personal opinion. I would make note that our fire chiefs are concerned about folks living in an RV situation. It is an uncontrollable code compliance situation for them. And in personal experience, I had two students my first year of teaching pass away during, due to carbon monoxide poisoning in their RV. So I'm pretty. I, I don't know if our staff has the capacity to micromanage this type of situation on the landscape. I also don't know. I, I wouldn't want to micromanage rent or agreements or any, any such of that nature. I think the biggest concern I have is health and safety. And then do we even have the capacity to micromanage that? So there's a lot of concerns out there and I would like to, before we even stepped further into the conversation, I'd like to bring in some of our fire chiefs or fire marshals and, and ask their opinion on how safe and, and how do they feel about potentially stepping into this direction? But then also, on the other hand, we are in a housing crisis. And so how else are we going to help move that needle? I don't know. So I'm neither for nor against, but I, I don't know. Now is the right time for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Joka.
Yeah, I have concerns as well and to learn from Commissioner Webb. The first thing that cleared out to me was you look at certain neighborhoods, you look at certain geographical areas within our county. Does it have the capacity to hold how many RVs? I think it's going septic sewer water, you know, utilities. Do we have the ability to basically get a lot of the double housing capacity, road structure, everything? If you wanted to take it literally, we could double our housing, you know, quickly. Can we handle that? So I think that's a base current concern would be capacity. You know, as I read through there, it was like, in my mind, I'm going, okay, no short-term rental. But if I have a thirty-day lease, that falls outside of short-term rental. Now I can go put a RV, luxury RV on my beach property, rent it out twelve times a year and I still could buy. So there's a lot of holes. There's a lot of, you know, this is kind of a Swiss cheese right now of a proposal. I think there's somebody looked at it from a lens that can be helped, short-term solution. But I think there's a lot of long-term problems that could be generated without, you know, really going through this integrator detail.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Joka. Commissioner Webb.
Well, I, when I first saw this, I thought, oh, cool. What a great idea. And then I read the staff report, I thought, hmm, maybe not. I don't know anything about RVs in terms of a land use issue. I mean, I have no, I didn't, I, I was really surprised in Gail's report that she said that there's no, there, there are no codes relating to RVs, Gail? That, I, I mean, I was really surprised at that. I would have assumed that they would have had the kinds of things that, that modular housing and what we call trailer-type housing. I would have assumed there would be something. I mean, this really scares me because I drive down the road a lot behind and in front of people who are, who are carrying RVs behind them. And it scares me a little bit that there aren't issues like that. The big, the very first thing that came to my mind was the whole issue of bathrooms. It's, it's the water issue. You know, and I assumed, I thought that with some of these that I've just seen, I don't think I've ever been inside an RV. But I see that some of them look like they have water tanks. So I assume that's what they're using for fresh water. But, but without a bathroom in, in a unit, and if, and if the definition of an RV does not include something that is a bathroom, then I think I would be against it because you would be talking about provide, I mean, if you rent somebody a place to live. Gail, does, do you have any feelings about that issue? I mean, do RVs often come with a bathroom? They do?
They do. Yeah.
Usually, is that a usual type thing?
Yeah.
How about things like washing machines?
No, you're probably not a washing machine unless maybe you have the super deluxe RV model, but yeah, usually not a washing machine.
But they do come with full facility, with, with bathroom facilities. Okay. That's, that was my very first question. Um, I really. And I was also surprised, Gail, that you didn't talk about whether or not you felt that there should be a meat, a minimum lot size. What are your thoughts on that? Are you assuming that in most of those residential region of areas, we have adequate lot sizing?
Yeah, with the rural residential zones, Commissioner Webb, for a new lot, the minimum lot size is two acres. But we do have a lot of one acre and smaller parcels, but those are almost always. There's usually adequate room. It's not a fifty by a hundred-foot lot for the most part. I mean, they, they would be fairly well-sized because to be developed, they already have to have room for the house, room for the septic system and room for the replacement septic. So they're usually large enough to that they could accommodate an additional RV.
Right. So how would we handle if these RVs have a, have a septic system within them? They have to be, I assume they have to be empty.
Correct.
Would they be emptied? I mean, like for instance, when you go, when, when an RV rents a temporary spot, you know, in a, in a site, in an RV site, um, there are facilities on site where they can empty their, their sewage?
Yeah. You can take, you, you can take your RV to a pump-out station. Conversely, you can also directly hook the RV into the septic system.
Oh, you can. Okay. Okay. Yeah. If, if the septic has the capacity for it.
Yeah.
That's, yeah. So would, would we, we would be able to assess that, wouldn't we? Because we know, well, we're supposed to know about septic capacity.
So environmental health would be responsible for reviewing the connection to the septic system and making sure that there would be adequate capacity.
So, so we would also assume that an RV would come with a, oh, no. It wouldn't necessarily come with a car, but anybody's living in a rural area has to have a car. So we would be, so the owner would, the owner of the lot would own the RV.
Or lease it from the property owner.
No, no, I mean the property owner.
Rent the space to somebody.
Well, that's right. That's what, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So we would have to have some kind of a, there would have, because there's a car involved. There's going to be a car involved with anybody who's living in an RV. So I think, well, if you're living in the country, don't you need a car?
It could be your car. It's like camper.
Yeah. Some of them have engines. Can drive a RV.
I'm not thinking of a bigger, yeah, okay.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, here's, here's the deal. This is the housing option for really desperate people. It's a step above homelessness. We can regulate it or not regulate it until we have adequate housing. These, these kinds of, I would call them dwelling places are going to be used, but because people don't have options. So I appreciate the comments about staff capacity and carrying capacity. It's, it's the capacity of the housing stock to adequately house the people. I appreciate that staff's input probably along with others resulted in the fact that the legislature allowed us the option of yes or no. And presumably gave up, gave us the option of establishing sidebars and consequences, which is a step up from some other pieces of legislation that we've seen. I like the idea that we don't take this on because we're already at capacity dealing with short-term rentals. That's a whole nother class of housing. On the other hand, it's getting really cold and really wet. People are going to be living in these. People are going to be using these. There is, there is the danger of death from carbon monoxide poisoning, from fires, from other kinds of things. You know, county manager, I don't know if you've got a recommendation about how we can thread the needle between not making housing more difficult for people and doing something, anything to protect the health and safety of not only the people living in RVs, but everybody around them. Do you have any recommendations or thoughts?
Sorry, Commissioner. I will respond as soon as the Commissioner Banks goes first.
Well, I was just thinking, people are already living in RVs and trailers in Cl辛县 county right now, unregulated. I don't know how we might be able to change that conversation because there's really no code compliance that the state has set forth for us in order for us to follow. And then I think about people are already living long-term in RVs and trailers in, in long-term parks. And so I, I don't know how much our, our needing to make this decision right now is going to change the conversation other than create a lot of work for staff. But, you know, I, I hate saying that it's, it's, but it is, it's unregulated. I'm being very realistic about this. And I don't know.
And I appreciate Commissioner Thompson's point that, you know, people are desperate and they need housing as a last resort for a lot of people. I just think it opens a can of worms that we don't want to get into myself at this point in time. I just seem to many derelict RVs and, and this is just, it opens the door to more of that in my opinion. So I, it would be my, my feeling that we would not pursue this at this time.
Yeah, check for elements of the board. I think that, you know, part of, I mean, as Gail mentioned, part of the legislation originally was, was more of a mandatory notion that the county would do this and then it became voluntary. If the county opts in, I think there has to be some regulatory structure to it because we are opting in to a program. And then I think all of the liability issues, public health issues, then become county issues and county liabilities. And so I think that's the complicated piece is that, yes, more housing is needed, more housing options are needed, but there is also a safety factor with these. And there are people living in RVs all over the county now, sometimes in, in state forests, sometimes in more residential areas. But I think from code enforcement, we have the same concerns as always, which is just like the issues. So, and it's not a decision to provide a little relief for your board that we need to make tonight. It's really planting the seed. Give your board time to think about it. And as you think about it, just if you can let me know, and at some point, we can bring the competition back through the board depending on how the board feels. We just wanted to bring it today because we do know that seasons are changing. If your board wanted us to do it and to do it right, it would take a little time to create the framework. But it doesn't need to be made today. So let us circle back with you individually and talk about this and see if we want to schedule another work session. So.
Can I ask a question? I, I'm wondering, Gail, since you are the, the code compliance aficionado among us, do you think that if we had some kind of standards like this, it would help us with our present problems of illegal or people illegally citing?
No, I, I don't think that it would stop the illegal activities. It would just make it a little bit easier to differentiate. And it would give, if, if there were some local codes and requirements that would also give staff the ability to make sure that units are just basically sound for living, that they're watertight, they don't have broken windows, they don't have holes in the roof, that nothing is obviously illegally connected. So.
But otherwise, do we, can, we don't do code enforcement right now on just various RVs?
Oh, no, we, we do. So you can live in an RV for thirty days out of a ninety-day period. And we have, I don't know, tens and tens and dozens of open code cases. Sometimes people comply and they'll, they'll move people off their property. Sometimes people voluntarily leave. Sometimes they leave and come back, but often what we just see is that it just moves people around the county. So they may start out in one place and co-compliance comes in. And then, you know, three months later, they're at a new place somewhere else. So we do do co-compliance action against that. We recently had one at, on Big Creek where we actually took it to the hearings officer and they were found in violation and the property owner had to pay a fine.
So it is, it's assumed to be the property owner who bears the responsibility?
Ultimately, yes. Yes. Yeah. And so you can also take the occupants to the hearings officer as well, but ultimately it's property owner's responsibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, another point of conflict that came up in the situation is that something like this, you know, like right now, I have, I'm a quarter acre short on my property of having an ADU. Yet I can, I can park an RV, not be compliant, just show the same, basically achieve the same difference. Whereas if I built an ADU for the same money as an RV, pretty much, it'd be an insulated safe space. It had regulations of building code. Have all the requirements, you know, make sure we have septic and capacity requirement. Yet I can't do that, but then now I can park an RV and do whatever. But there's, there's like that, you know, conflict right there that what we're doing now is more of a code, what we have now and will kind of arbitrarily violate what we have for ADUs by putting an RV is essentially the same thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Joka. Any other comments on this? I wanted to write him on our agenda. We'll move on to comprehensive plan update, goal five revisions, page twenty-six. And the development director, Gail Hicks.
Yes. So when your board adopted the updated comprehensive plan in June of this year, you remember that we did not have all the goals updated. We had deliberately pulled goal, goal five out to do some additional work on. And then goals sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, you'll be looking at that contract, those contracts this evening so that we can complete that work. But since June, staff has continued working on goal five. You'll see that similar to what we did with the other goals, we pulled the narrative out, placed that in a separate background report and left just a brief overview and then the goals, objectives, and policies for goal five. And goal five does cover a lot of areas from wetlands and riparian areas to quarry and mining, historic resources, and wildlife habitat, among others. So we just wanted to bring the revised version back to your board again this evening to see if you had any additional thoughts or directions for staff. And then either based upon your feedback, we'll continue to revise it or we'll move it forward to the planning commission and then formally bring it back to your board for adoption. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Gail. Commissioner Banks.
Policy U on page forty-four, intensive recreational development shall not locate with sensitive tropical habitat areas. Is that a statement that's required by the state?
I would have to go back and look at that, Commissioner Banks. We tried to be very careful about our use of shall and should. So it's possible that we missed something, but it's also probable that this is. Probable that this is something that's required in statewide planning goal five. And I apologize, I don't have a copy of that right in front of me.
Okay, I just want to put it out there that, you know, I would consider Westport's new landing as an intensive recreational development. And if we were having any plans of doing other type developments in order to create. Recreational facilities along the Plumby River, but also along Big Creek or any other of our, you know, lovely fishing locations. Coho salmon is considered an intensive or is considered a protected species. And so that would therefore negate our ability to do that. So it would automatically put us into. Another situation and, and I know how much our entire board appreciated the Westport development. So I'm just putting out there that I'm wondering if policy U might be reworded or misplaced.
I don't think. I don't think that, that, that's, that's, that's not, I, I wouldn't consider that an intensive use. An intensive use is usually something that requires people on the ground, you know, things like. Small amusement parks.
Commissioner Bangs, I can verify that, whether that should be a shall or a should, and we can certainly look at that and revise that.
Because I mean, I'm looking at Big Creek Park and it would be wonderful to have a bathroom facility there for people that come to visit. So. I mean, I'm just saying, let's look at policy U and see how the verbiage on that would help us in the future.
Park usually isn't considered.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
I have a question. On page. Get a little funky on the pages here. I, I guess it's page seventy-eight. You have a. Maybe it's seventy-nine, oops. I think it's seventy-eight, but there's no, there's no number on that. This is your. Your very wonderful table. That is listing for the first time that I've ever seen. All of the unincorporated. Water systems in the county. And the, 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 the. The bo- at the bottom of the page under it, there are, there are three. That are, that are sort of explanations of what the various columns mean. And there are things in the, in the three definitions. That don't appear here, but I would assume that's because you took it from, it comes from some other, some other use. But there were. There were, there are things within the column that aren't explained below. For example. Under system type. There is. I'm sorry, I am wrong. Never mind. Don't listen to me. Maybe just shut off my mic for the night. I'm sorry.
Yeah, they are listed there.
They are. I just completely missed what I was looking at. I'm sorry, Gail. That, that's, don't, like I say, somebody turn off my microphone.
Did you have a question, baby?
Well, so I just wonder. I know that private lands under the PFA are going to be required to map. Or map their roadways, but also map the connectivity between streams and, and. Really dive into whether or not they're fish-bearing or non-fish-bearing waterways. And I'm just curious to see if there's, there should be some verbiage alluding to that. I know that though, if, if their HCP doesn't come through in the next. Would have to pull the date out. I don't know what the date is. It's like five to ten years from now. Then we revert back to the old. Forest Practices Act. So I'm just curious. In this goal. I feel like possibly some PFA verbiage should be in it, but I'm like, this is an opinion-seeking question. I'm not sure.
So Commissioner Bangs, we, we, we really tried to take out references to things that are covered. Either under Forest Practices Act or in this case, the Private Forest Accord. Because we will not have any jurisdiction over that, so that we didn't put anything like that in there.
Okay, I, I get, I get that. I appreciate that. Thank you. Well, it changes so often. So that's actually pretty thoughtful.
Any other comments, questions, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. You know, as, as everyone is demonstrating tonight. This is the most complicated one I think we've dealt with, and it's this essential human need. With this multiplicity of many systems. I think the information you've given us and the information we will continue to wrestle with. Will make us better commissioners as we engage with it, but it's a long and complicated conversation. So I want to say thank you, I think. As a joke, all right. Cause, cause this water issue isn't going away, but the information will help us deal with it more productively. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, I, this is, I, I thought, I thought that this goal, Gail, was particularly. Thorough. And I really appreciate it because, in fact, I was really surprised at how much of the data. You had called. We were, I guess I was just today looking at the contracts or talking about the contracts that. That are going to be signed with the, with the, what I think of the heavy-duty environmental goals. But I think that one of the things that we learned from goal five, which I, which I usually, you know. I mean, we planners usually figured, well, it's the first ten or twelve goals that, you know, that they're the more urban goals. Well, you know, it, this really illustrates for me what a non-urban county Clatso is. And, and you've given us really a lot, you've called a lot of information. And I think once we do those other goals, we're going to have even more. Of a, of a knowledge simply about what the, and I think they are primarily the water issues. But otherwise, I, I think it looks really good. And remembering from the early days. Of the discussions of these goals, I thought that the, the maze and the shells were really very carefully derived. And I really appreciate that because you had to go through a lot of comments to, to make that real.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I, can I ask a, just a process question? So this has been before the planning commission? Have they reviewed this? Or they're just coming up?
We started with your board. This is the latest version, so Planning Commission has not seen this yet. So. If your board is generally good, without exception of policy U that we'll look at. Then we could schedule it for the Planning Commission Public Hearing and Review in December, and then bring it back to your board in January.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one quick comment is that, you know, in reviewing this, there's three words that stuck out to me for the most part is, you know, should, shall, and encourage. They're used a lot in this document, but I think sometime we maybe review. The implications of those three words in some of the. Policy, because I think in some cases we're encouraged, it might be trying to sway towards one way or should or shall. But, you know, those three words are kind of powerful, I thought, as I read through. And I think we have to just kind of review those a little closer on a couple items. Just a general comment.
Yeah. Yes.
During the process, John, there was a great deal of discussion about those three words. And so maybe. It might be, maybe it might be somewhere in, especially in the. What we used to call the addendum to the, to the goal, that we might actually explain those words.
Well, explanation is where they're used in each, in each policy.
No.
Should it be a should, should it be a shall, or you know.
Yeah, that we went, boy, we spent.
Well, and I think Gail can, or I can, I don't know, Gail, if you want to explain what the process was on this. As we went through all of the other goals and, because there, we did create kind of a methodology to how. To how we used it. It was all based upon the process, but also. Really focused on the should, on the shall, on those things that are required of the county. And you can tell me if I'm wrong, Gail, but we were looking at the shals as what are, what is the county compelled. To do by state statute or by other requirements. And then pretty much everything else was, was falling into the should or the. Or the encourage, because those are things that boards will ultimately decide.
Yeah.
Board of Commissioners, local, the elected officials. And so I think it's that generally also the case, Gail, in the goal.
Yes, it is. That's correct.
So, yeah, very good. Yeah, that's good. Commissioner Bangs.
I guess in this document, I was looking for a listing of all of our currently identified historical sites. And then I see in policy J that there are. A list here, but it seems like an incomplete list. Or in, in policy J, are we just kind of. Giving an idea of what would be considered something that we would look at for historical significance?
Which one?
Policy J on page forty-nine.
Yes, so those would be the sites that we would recommend for further review. To see if they should be classified as historic. I think that in the table. There is a table that's in the background report and I think it's also in goal five. It's on page. Something that I can't read because it's too small. Fifty-six, maybe? It's table one, which is our resource inventory, and I think that we did include. The list of historic sites that we have here in the county. I think that's part of that table.
Okay, I just wanted to put out there, we have a tiny little bank right off the railway in Napa. It's a concrete square. It's covered in, in briar at this point in time, but I think I would like that kind of added to our little list. I'm pretty sure it's on a. A county-owned or state-owned property, but it's just a little concrete square with a doorway and it's right next to the railroad. It's a bank, yeah. What is left is the vault.
Oh, cool. Oh, yes.
So I would just like to add that.
Cool.
I don't know who owns that property. It's a wetland. Sorry, I'm just.
Terry owns it.
Oh, Terry. Let's get the weed whacker out and expose that.
Did you pay your admission?
Yeah. Oh, that's so cool.
Okay, any more discussion about goal five?
I guess, Commissioner Bangs, when we were, back in the days, back in the last decade, when we were, when we were actually doing this. One of the things that I felt real strongly about is that we needed to, and you, you kind of referenced it. But that I'm very concerned about the fact that the, that the. That the, and this is not a criticism at all, but the historical. Society just, it doesn't have enough bandwidth to, to recognize. And work on the historic places in the rural parts of the county. And there are, I'm convinced there are a number of old barns. A number of structures that are probably historically very, very valuable. And especially at the time, I was doing a lot of reading about the history of Clatso County and. And a lot of places that just ought to be recognized for some, some of the things that happened in those places. The other thing that I didn't feel was strong enough in this, in this. Was, I believe that we should have a very conscious effort. To recognize that some of the Native American presence in our county. And to actually work on identifying the places and the events that happened. In those, in those places. And I didn't see that in here. But I also realized that that takes money.
No, I just wanted to interject that our state agencies already do that whenever they are proposing either. A harvest or anything like that, they always go through a historic value review. And those are also mapped and then shared. And so.
But I don't think they're on our list.
Well, so working with other state agencies is on our list somewhere. And it's. Prior to any action that occurs on land. They look at the historic value or possible historic artifacts or possible burial grounds or some such across the inherited organ.
Right, but that's when they do something. What I'm, I'm thinking about places like, what, the few, the, that's why I'm a huge Grange fan. Because the Granges have people in the communities of each Grange have sort of mobilized. And decided, I think most of the Granges are all privately funded. And so there's, and there is a state interest. I think it's, I think it's actually the Agriculture Department that does have some kind of a program. For preserving the Granges. But they're just. I, I, I don't know. I, I guess I was, I, I, I talked to the Historical Society about it and they said, oh yeah, that would be a really great idea. You know, wouldn't we all love to be able to do all those things? So, but. I, I guess I was just looking, Gail, for something a little stronger here, because I remember that we had great discussions about it. You know, back in the early days of this.
Any other comments, questions on the goal five?
It was a light read.
Or you maybe.
Thank you, commissioners.
Certainly is thorough, Gail. Thank you very much. And that is all we have on the work session, so it will take fifteen minutes and reconvene.
No, you know what? I know. That, that, that the Napples, there are history classes.
Six o'clock, the Board of Commissioners as the governing body of Clatso County, all county service districts for which this body so acts. And as the Clatso County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody here this evening. Clerk of the Board, can we have the roll call?
Chair Quila.
Here.
Vice Chair Bangs.
Here.
Commissioner Toyoka.
Here.
Commissioner Webb.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
I'm here.
All right, we had an opportunity to review the agenda at our work session. Do we have any questions or comments? Are we ready for a motion?
I move to approve.
Moving second to approve the agenda as presented, all those in favor signify then aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. First item is a proclamation for tsunami awareness day, and we have Justin Gibbs, our emergency management director here at the C M to present on this. Welcome, Justin.
Chair and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to appear this evening to provide some background. In December twenty fifteen, the UN General Assembly. Designated November fifth as World Tsunami Awareness Day, calling on countries, international bodies. And civil society to raise tsunami awareness and share innovative approaches to risk reduction. World Tsunami Awareness Day was the brainchild of Japan, which due to its repeated bitter experience. Has over the years built up major expertise in areas such as tsunami early warning, public action. And building back better after a disaster to reduce future impact. Rapid development and growing tourism in tsunami-prone regions are putting ever more people in harm's way. That makes the reduction of risk a key factor if the world is to achieve substantial reduction in disaster mortality. In an effort to promote preparedness in our communities, we are presenting this proclamation for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution and order proclaiming November fifth to be tsunami awareness day and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
Second that.
Moving second to approve the resolution and order proclaiming November fifth to be tsunami. Moving second to approve the resolution and order proclaiming November fifth to be tsunami awareness day and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation. All those in favor signify than aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming November fifth, twenty twenty-three, to be tsunami awareness day. Whereas in December two thousand fifteen, the United Nations General Assembly designated November fifth as World Tsunami Awareness Day, calling out on all countries, international bodies, and civil society to raise tsunami awareness and share innovative approaches to risk reduction. And whereas in the past one hundred years, fifty-eight tsunamis have claimed more than two hundred and sixty thousand lives for an average of forty-six hundred per disaster, surpassing any other natural disaster. And whereas the Pacific coast is at risk both from a local tsunami arriving within minutes of an earthquake and a distant tsunami taking several hours to reach the shore. And whereas since eighteen fifty-four, twenty-one tsunamis have impacted the Oregon coast. The last two damaging tsunamis were in nineteen sixty-four as a result of the Great Alaskan Earthquake and in two thousand eleven as a result of the Great Tohoku, Japan earthquake that caused severe damage and contributed to the deaths of four people on the Oregon coast. And whereas there is a potential for tsunami death tolls to increase in the future because of the combined effects of population increase in coastal areas, growing tourism in tsunami-prone regions, and sea level rise. And whereas early warning and early action are effective tools to protect people, saving lives, and preventing the hazard from then becoming a disaster. And now therefore be it hereby resolved, the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November fifth, twenty twenty-three as tsunami awareness day in Clatsop County and invites all community members to join in this observance by encouraging all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared society. Dated this twenty-fifth day of October, twenty twenty-three, Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much, Justin. Thank you for all you're doing and, and, uh, for a successful event out at Camp Rylea.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Have a wonderful evening.
Yeah, you too. Next item is Veterans Day proclamation. And, uh, turning it over to our county manager, Don Boone.
Thank you, Chair Quila, members of the board. Uh, November eleventh, twenty twenty-three will be the hundred and fourth annual official Veterans Day in the United States. This observance is critical in recognizing veterans and their families as part of the fabric of the local community and provides an opportunity for Clatsop County residents to honor their neighbors who served and wore the uniform. Clatsop County and numerous community partners have also joined in an initiative called Operation Green Light for Veterans, letting the local veteran community know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported by illuminating their buildings green from November sixth through the twelfth. Um, a little bit of background, Clatsop County is home to about thirty-five hundred veterans and fifteen hundred active duty personnel today. Um, on a personal note, I come from a multi-generational military family. Um, my sons serve myself, my father, and many others. And, um, somebody who's seen the sacrifice that goes into service on so many different levels. I just want to recognize and thank all the veterans, um, for their service. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, County Manager. Thank you for your service. Commissioner Toyoka, thank you for your service. Would you like to make the motion or say anything?
Comment.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, Veterans Day, you know, I, like many other veterans, I feel it was an honor to serve this nation. It wasn't a requirement, it wasn't a job, it was an honor and a privilege. And as you travel to different points in the world, you're not going to vacation. You're going to the, some of the worst places in the world and see some of the worst conditions, and that only just intensifies your respect for this country and your desire, you know, all the good that this country has. You know, people complain a lot, and they have, they point out the, the nitpicky bed. I think we have a lot of first-world problems and we, we nitpick where we shouldn't. But if you've been to these other locations, um, I think people just would really enjoy and respect the fact that they are living in this wonderful country. Um, and so I have all the respect for, you know, all the pride of having the opportunity to serve this country.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Quila. We're, we're honored to be able to sit next to you on this day. I know you're a decorated pilot in armed forces, and so we just appreciate, uh, everything that you have done for us.
Now, I was one of the goof-offs, so I didn't.
No, come on.
Uh, but I would like to, uh, approve the res- r- report the motion to approve the resolution and order proclaiming November eleventh, twenty twenty-two as Veterans Day and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
Second.
Moving second to approve the resolution and order proclaiming November eleven, twenty twenty-two, or excuse me, twenty twenty-three, as Veterans Day and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation. All those in favor signify than aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming November fifth, or excuse me, November eleventh, November eleventh, twenty twenty-three, to be Veterans Day. Whereas in November nineteen nineteen, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November eleventh as the first commemoration of Armistice Day, the precursor, precursor to Veterans Day. And whereas Clatsop County is home to more than thirty-five hundred veterans, more than fifteen hundred active duty personnel, and countless family members of veterans from all branches of the armed forces, United States Navy, Army, Air Force, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and Space Force. And whereas veterans and their families shall be recognized for the contributions to our community and the sacrifices that were made through their service to our nation and others around the world. And whereas President George Washington said, "The willingness with which our young people are likely to serve in any war, no matter how justified, shall be directly proportional to how they perceive the veteran of earlier wars were treated and appreciated by their nation." And whereas Clatsop County, in partnership with Clatsop Ca- Community Action, is committed to serving these valuable members of our community through the county's Veteran Services Program. And whereas this week, Clatsop County and numerous community partners have joined across the nation in the initiative Operation Green Light for Veterans, letting the local veteran community know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported by illuminating their buildings green from November sixth through November twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Now therefore be it hereby resolved, the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November eleventh, twenty twenty-three as Veterans Day in Clatsop County and encourages all community members to join in this observance and celebration of the sacrifices made by all who wore the uniform of our armed forces and share our gratitude for the local veteran community by displaying a green light outside their place of business or residence through November sixth through November twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Dated this twenty-fifth day of October, twenty twenty-three, Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. And yes, thank you for your service. Next is business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
Yes, there is.
Okay. If you have signed up to testify, please wait until you're called on, then give your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes to speak. First.
Uh, we have Jeff and Denise Davis.
Jeff and Denise Davis. Jeff and Denise.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, Denise and Jeff Davis, seven nine four three two Ray Brown Road, Cove Beach. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you again. We were pleased to see at your last work session Director Henrickson's comprehensive presentation regarding implementing caps on short-term vacation rentals in the county's unincorporated residential zones. We appreciate your board's unanimity in that session in supporting caps of seven, four, seven, or even up to ten percent. Although we applaud staff's assembling what we feel are generally fair recommendations, we agree with Commissioner Webb's perspective regarding the too-heavy emphasis on complaints about STRs. The complaint process represents one aspect of the burden residents carry in living amongst STRs, but it is only one component of the more overarching concern of residents' rights to quality of life and neighborhood livability. There are aspects of having too many STRs in a neighborhood that can't be, easily be reflected in a particular complaint, such as more drivers unfamiliar with our narrow gravel roads. When transient occupants outnumber full-time residents, as, as may already currently be the case in Cove Beach, who will volunteer on community committees and boards and fire districts that our rural neighborhoods rely on for essential services? You've just proclaimed November fifth as Tsunami Awareness Day. That's fantastic. Um, and as you know, for emergency preparedness and response to work, our neighborhoods have got to have a critical mass of residents rather than nightly STR tenants. Sincerely, we really do thank you for returning to the plan for establishing caps on STRs. We trust your board will follow staff's lead and, committed to neighborhood livability, decide on fair, reasonable STR caps for each of the county's unincorporated residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Are there any other members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
No, there's not.
Okay. Is there anyone here this evening that is ready to testify, would like to speak for two minutes? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the business from the public and move on to the consent calendar. We've all had an opportunity to review the consent calendar. Do we have any questions, comments on the consent calendar? Are we ready for a?
I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Moving second to approve the consent calendar as presented, all those in favor signify than aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh.
Oops.
All those opposed? Yeah, discussion? Did you have something you wanted to say?
I did.
Okay. Commissioner Webb?
Yes. Um, uh, I, I'd like to thank, um, Paul Williams for being here. I had earlier in the week told, uh, the, the county manager that I wanted discuss, I wanted to pull the, um, the, uh, the Community Corrections Biennial Plan because I thought it was something that we should talk about and that, that our citizens should listen about. Uh, I think that we don't always hear enough about what is happening, you know, and, uh, and I thought this was an opportunity, but then I, a- and then I, I, uh, told the commissioner that I had thought about it, and I'm sorry, I didn't really want to burden those people and, and Paul, who often shows up at our meetings anyway, came. So, thank you. Thank you very much, Paul, and, and thank you for the good work that you all always do.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Paul, did you want to say anything? You want to? Sure, all right. Yeah, thank you for being here, and thank you, Commissioner Webb, for highlighting that. Appreciate that. All right, next is Commissioner Reports. Um, we'll go ahead and start, uh, with Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would do want to mention that the Community Action Team met, and that's a noble community organization that covers three counties, deals with low-income people in an empowering way in a variety of programs that are essential to their well-being. That's a monthly meeting. Columbia, Clatsop, and Tillamook Counties. The second thing is that there was a tourism conference, a tourism management conference, in my mind, uh, in Astoria that was, uh, very interesting and informative. Commissioner Webb was there, I saw her. Also, um, Saturday, there was what I think was both, uh, sacred and politically important legal signing of a memorandum of understanding between the Chinook People and the Nakankum Watershed Council in Seaside to commit to those bodies working together collaboratively to talk about water issues. That's an important step forward and an important way of honoring people who are all committed to managing water resources well. Yesterday was, uh, I would call it a sacred event of a different kind. I was happy to see Commissioner Quila there as community members gathered to honor Dr. Bob Wayne, who, uh, has unfortunately left us. We will no longer have the benefit of a Brooklyn physician-surgeon dressed in his cowboy outfit riding his horses down the center of Cannon Beach and doing the, um, necessary cleanup afterward, indeed. Dr. Bob was the co-founder, along with Lila Wick- Wickham, of the Medical Reserve Corps of Cannon Beach that covers, uh, all the way down to the, past the Tillamook County line so that we can be better prepared during emergency response issues. Dr. Wayne was beloved. He was iconic. He'll be deeply and profoundly missed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
Um, yeah, so just an update on the childcare task force. We released a one-pager and, um, information regarding the hiring or potential hiring of, uh, a grant manager. Um, so if you guys, if the county has a chance to share that one pager on their website, that would be amazing. I'll make sure that you guys get it. Uh, and it looks like applications close right before Thanksgiving. So, if anybody knows of anybody who is very passionate about childcare, please send them that information, and maybe they want to have a new job. Um, Northwest Senior Disability Services is still negotiating their employment contracts, and so that's just an ongoing weekly conversation. Um, FTLAC will be meeting next week, Friday, November third. Um, I had another, uh, session with the Governor's Office regarding, uh, Clatsop County and our future due to the impacts of the, um, Habitat Conservation Plan. And just to reiterate that it is not a conversation regarding the HCP. It is not a car- conversation that we are allowed to discuss the secondary and the tertiary impacts um, that the HCP will have on our economics and our job loss. It is only a conversation regarding, uh, direct receipts, um, or direct funding, um, due to the losses of the upcoming HCP. And so I've mainly just spent a lot of time highlighting what, what's going to happen to us. And, uh, it's a ideas-staring session. And, uh, so the Governor's Office released to all of the Council of Forest Trustland Counties a letter. I hope you all had a moment to read it. Um, and I, when I look at the numbers, uh, our loss for a thirty percent loss over the next seventy years equates to five hundred and twelve million dollars. Um, and a forty percent loss equates to six hundred and eighty-two million dollars over the next seventy years. So, we're going to fall somewhere in that range with this Habitat Conservation Plan. So I'm hopeful, um, that the Governor's Office, uh, and this next legislative session supports, um, somehow funding our losses due to our loss of these receipts. Um, due to this generational plan that, um, we have no control over as a county, and we've had no input in as a county. And so I think that the drive from, um, our board is to ask the State of Oregon for a generational-type commitment in order to help us, um, pivot economically over the next generation. It's going to take us that long, and I'm hopeful, um, and then, you know, but the legislative session's coming up real fast. And, uh, so I just wish that we had more time. So, thank you.
Now, thank you, Commissioner Banks. I really appreciate your efforts there and appreciate county staff and, uh, county manager's office as well and all the, uh, number crunching and figuring out a lot of what these impacts are really going to mean over, over time. So, thank you for all your efforts. Commissioner Webb?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair Quila. Um, uh, as Commissioner Thompson mentioned, uh, the Oregon Coast Visitors Association, uh, held its annual conference here, uh, last week, and, uh, it was very well-attended. And, um, I, I don't know, I, it, I think every commissioner got some kind of a letter a few weeks ago from, um, what is her name? Gina, uh, who is the AOC Chair, asking us to, um, uh, to say if, if we would be interested in ha- holding an AOC con- the, the annual AOC conference in our counties. And, um, so, uh, I, I got on the phone and said, okay, Gina, what are the parameters? What's going on? And, um, when I called. And, um, when I called, uh, when I called the, my, I said to myself, the Seaside Convention Center. And so I called them and first of all, they're booked for the next five years on those dates. Uh, and, uh, one of the things I do hear from, from a lot of our tourism businesses here is that, uh, everybody always says that we can't handle big conferences. Uh, but so ACFA decided to kind of take, take a little gander with, with the city of Astoria and working with our local chamber managed to figure out a way to hold a conference that didn't have a conference center. And, uh, they dispersed people throughout hotels here and they had the, the meetings in different venues all over this, but very close in. You know, at the Flag Room, Fort George, of course, is always willing to lend us places. Um, very, various, various meeting rooms. And, uh, people were absolutely thrilled. The center was at the Elks, uh, in that gorgeous upstairs room of theirs. And all the meals were, they, they provided all the meals, uh, and it was a huge success. It was, they, they just basically proved, "Yeah, we can have a, we can have conferences here of that many people." Um, and, and people were really over, there was a, an event at the Barbie Center one night and, um, it was, it was just, it was fun and, and it was very cool. And it was also extremely informative with once again the emphasis on helping businesses be, first of all, inclusive of the kinds of tourists that they welcome and can accommodate. And also, um, helping visitors, um, do more natural things. Um, looking at more woodlands, doing some environmental work, do, doing some storm cleanup. So, we're looking to put together a bunch of kind of programs for, for tourists to do that because our tourists tell us constantly, "Well, what other than the beach?" Uh, and so, and we have lots of gorgeous things other than the beach. So, uh, it was, it was a huge success. Um, yesterday was the meeting of the, uh, ambulance, um, committee. And, um, uh, I, I have a bit of good news from medics. They are very pleased that, um, they, they're, they're beginning to see, uh, easier hiring for, for their staff. And they think it's because, uh, the state has allowed now certification. There are different levels of certification for people who work in ambulances. And they, they are allowing a good bit of OJT and allowing people to come in and be trained by the cohort of people that they're going to be working with. And I think that's an exci- a very exciting idea for, actually for workforce in general. Uh, we, we know that OJT works. Uh, and so I, I thought that was also good news from yesterday. I think that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Toyoka?
Thank you. Um, a bunch of other topics, uh, from HCP to, uh, planning, or some of the other, um, other helping into housing development, a little bit of report about housing, but I think I'll just shift and, uh, we talk about our community so much here. And we have, you know, sometimes you think of rural Oregon, we're out there, we're in the nowhere, we're, you know, we're in the sticks. Not much provided, but I tell you what, there's an incredible class of people that we, you know, you see every day. Great individuals and, uh, we've lost a few really good ones lately. Um, you know, you know, our constituents, our friends, our neighbors. Um, James Nikas, Ace, he passed and he's a gentleman who would, I would literally talk to a few times a week about land use and zoning and I credit him with educating me because every time he would bring something up, I would have to look it up, dig deeper and just to know what he was talking about. He was very smart. So, you know, he, he helped me out in that, you know, land use and zoning. He was very passionate about county and development. But, uh, just through him, I just learned so much and, you know, I gained so much from his presence. Uh, last, Dr. Wayne. Um, Bob Wayne was, you know, anybody who knew him, he had Dr. Wayne. He was a medical, you know, professional, great person, but urban cowboy, car enthusiast. And what a lot of people don't know is ham radio enthusiast. And he was very involved in ham radio and his, he was really passionate about having a urgency network through the ham radio system as a failsafe. He was, he would always advocate for that. He would come see me all the time and say, "How can we do this? How can we help get more, do more?" You know, so another wonderful individual in our community, um, Daryl Bergerson. Just recently lost Mr. Bergson, you know, American, the, the American dream. You know, the, the small guy in the totem pole who worked hard, was passionate about life. And he, you know, he did a lot, you know, for, you know, business, but, uh, he did a lot for the community. I don't know how much, how people know how much he actually did, that he was involved in this community in so many different ways. And I think I only shook hands with him one time in my entire, when I ever knew him. That was the very first time my father-in-law introduced me to him. He said, "Hi, this is Mr. Bergerson." "Mr. Bergen, how are you doing?" He goes, "Name's Daryl." Every other occasion after that, he hugged. I only shook his hand one time. He was that passionate about life, about the community, about everything. So, you know, again, I said, these, we, our community is stacked full of these wonderful people everywhere and all over walks of life. We're just fortunate to be amongst them. Just wanted to acknowledge them and how much they, how much they contribute and how much they make this community what it is.
Yep. I, Commissioner Toyoka, I couldn't agree with you more. I'm so glad that you mentioned all of those important figures in our, in our county and real unique characters, each one of them too, but, uh, big contributors, I agree. Um, thank you. Um, County Manager?
Chair Quila, members of the, of the board?
Could I add one thing for Ace Nikas? He, we just, we just had a meeting where we talked about our comp plan and he was on the Miles Crossing Plan. And he was the most knowledgeable and the most really heartfelt participant. And he came up with the idea that at that terrible intersection in Miles Crossing where, where Business 101 has that, at, uh, uh, Landwear Corner is what I call it. And, and, uh, he said, "You know, we need to put one of those, one of those circle things." He meant a roundabout. And so I've, I've always, I'm going to work for that. I'm going to work for that. And I wanted to be called the Ace Circle. But he was, he was a huge member of that committee. Came to every meeting and really contributed a huge amount.
Yep. Agreed, very much so. County Manager?
Chair Quila, members of the board. Um, just a quick update. I've mentioned this, um, prior, but, um, this is related to the, uh, to the broadband, um, infrastructure efforts. Um, we had partnered with, uh, with a company to do what's called a walkout, which is really a survey, um, of the jewel fine maple Elsie area, which is our largest underserved, um, area with internet. Um, we did complete that. Uh, we have all the data, um, from that, which has been very informative. And we are meeting, um, with, uh, with Charter Friday to go through that and develop the next stage of the plan. But, um, I'm feeling more optimistic since the first time we've ever talked about broadband that, um, that that underserved area will be served in, in relatively short order when you think about infrastructure. So, um, that's on the good news front. Um, more to do, um, but progress. Um, the other is that I just want to remind the board, there is a brief executive session after this meeting as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you County Manager. We'll move on to the public hearing this evening, which is ordinance 23-13, Storage Structures for Emergency Supplies on page 339. This is the time set aside for the second public hearing on ordinance 23-13, Storage Structures for Emergency Supplies. And, uh, County Council, can I have the, uh, second reading by title only, please?
This is ordinance number 23-13 in the matter of, and ordinance, adopting amendments to the Clatsop County Land and Water Development and Use Code, Article 4, zoning regulations to address storage structures for emergency supplies.
Thank you County Council. Uh, we have our Community Development Director, Gail Henrickson, to provide the staff report. Gail?
Thank you Chair and Commissioners. Uh, the changes that are proposed this evening would, uh, add storage structures for emergency supplies to 25 zones throughout the county. The reason that we're doing this is because we have addressed and listed this particular use in some of our farm and forest zones, uh, but not in other zones. And our emergency management department has, uh, grant funding to place some of these structures. Uh, but unfortunately the zones didn't call them out. So, that's the reason for the amendments. Uh, when we took this to the Planning Commission, we, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended that your board approve it as presented and we have not had any comments from any members of the public, either for or against the changes. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Gail, do we have any questions? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on and we'll open the public hearing on ordinance 23-13. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest to report? For the board, are there any members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
No, there are not.
All right, are there any members of the public signed up to speak in person? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance 23-13. And at this time, we'll need a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 23-13 and conduct the second reading by title only.
Move and second to approve ordinance 23-13 and conduct the second reading by title only. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries and then this ordinance will go into effect 30 days from today. Right, thank you Gail.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anything for the good of the order? So, we are going to have an executive session. The Clatsop County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.660, subset 2, subset E, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, the Board of Commissioners will reconvene into open session. And reconvene in our regular meeting, um, of the county commission. And we have this agenda item in front of us. County Manager?
Uh, Chair Quila, members of the board, I think, um, if your board would just, um, authorize staff to execute or authorize the county manager in this case to execute, um, the intent to purchase, that should be sufficient.
Yep.
I move to authorize County Manager to negotiate purchase terms with, uh, Teaven Brothers Land and Timber on behalf of the county for the acquisition of the property to construct an alternate route in Westport.
Okay, move and second to authorize the county manager to negotiate purchase terms with Teaven Brothers Land and Timber Company on behalf of the county for the acquisition of property, uh, to construct an alternate route in Westport. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you everybody.